Commissioner's Court for Razzle County, we have an executive session on July 21st, 2018, at 10:00 AM, Commissioner's Court in the county administration building, 200 SFX, at between 1:06. First item on the agenda is indication pledge, please, to use Texas flag, Commissioner Kelly.
Our heavenly Father, we pause mindful of any blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you be with us here today as we make decisions that affect all of Razzle County. Or we ask also that you be with all of our men and women around the world that are risking their lives today, awaiting their families and their time, in order for us to be able to have the pleasure to meet as we are here today, and all of our first responders that put their lives on the line every day. It is our thing, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and/or concerns. Okay, now we'll consider take action on agenda items three through 27. Number three is considering possible action on county burn ban. Michelle or Jason, one of y'all want to come up? I know you handed out some.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We're dry. We're starting to dry out. There's a fine line between dryness in Razzle County, between the north and the south part of Razzle County. The north is pushing over 600 as far as the KPDAs. Fuel moistures are set. South side is about 300. After speaking with the other volunteer fire chiefs, it's a recommendation that we go forth due to low activity, but the dryness, no rain predicted. I think we're at a point where it's only a matter of time before we start having some wild land fires.
I agree. We are dry there. I don't have much forecast for raining.
We're waiting, waiting, wait, this rate?
Hundred, hundred and seven degrees.
Hundred and seven degrees.
And maybe if we put it on, it'll go to raining, so.
I'll move. Let's watch the car.
Move to burn ban.
Motion made.
Second to approve burn ban discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that will be for 60 days. That's part of your motion.
So we can take it off anytime.
We can take it off anytime in there, and if it needs to be extended after the 60 days, we could do it. But we should be, you know, September.
Hopefully we can.
Yeah, and just hold it for 60 days. Public service announcement, if you do smoke and you're riding your car, don't toss them out. That's probably one of the biggest issues.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Number four is approval of following people to the local workforce development board. Robbie Summerfield, term of employment is seven, one, 2018, to six, 30, 2021. And Mary Valdez Perez, term of employment is nine, one, 2018, to eight, 30, one, 2021.
Move for approval.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number five is payment authorization to CME Testing and Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $19,322.63. Invoice exceeded the blanket purchase order in place for general testing services. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number six is approval of following job descriptions. A, class code 1508, position zero one, correctional professional, temporary for sheriff's office, jail medical, in class B. And B, class code 22666, position one, engineering tech, temporary for road bridge.
Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number seven is acknowledgment of amended accounting procedure manual for grants.
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number eight, request for approval to apply, receive funds for new computers through Texas Council on Family Violence. Move approval.
Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number nine is request to approve the receipt of $10,000 in grants for partnership agreement with TAMU Forensic Nursing Program.
Move for approval.
Second. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 10 is amendment of business force personnel management agreement with Bryant College Station Metropolitan Planting Organization. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 11 is request approval for the agreement between Bull Film LLC and Razzle County, Texas, in connection with production of a motion picture tentatively titled Bull. Move approval. Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, it could be good bull.
What were you gonna question?
Surely they don't want to have a good bull?
Sounds like good terms, ain't it?
Is that one of yours?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval of interlocal agreement with Texas NM Agrolife Extension Service.
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion made. Second discussion. I think the contact information just needed to be changed in there. The bottom line's okay, but there was some contact information. Still had Tom's name on there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 13 is renewal of contract 19-001, Legal Representation of Indigent to Juvenile Defense with Patrick Genron in Lane, Tivota.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 14, amendment of bid tabulation for bid number 19-002 Filters. Move approval. Second.
Motion made. Second discussion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 15 is order exempted contract with Trainer HL with competitive solicitation pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 262.024A4.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 16, contract with Trainer HL for the design and the BCDC kitchen expansion and remodel.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You hear the aye?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 17 is consider and take action on city of College Station utility permit to construct a road board for an eight-inch water line crossing under the old Arrington Road, 300 feet north of Arrington Road, sites located precinct one. Move approval. Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 18 is request permission to enter private property owned by Mark and Phyllis Hodges on edge cut off road 300 feet southeast of shortcut road. County will clear fence line in the curve for better site distance traveling public sites located precinct two. Move approval. Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 19 is approval of replaid of lots one and two in the estate of Farrell Creek along the request, along with the request for a variance to Article 7 dot C dot five dot small c of Razzle County subdivision regulations regarding text dot right-of-way dedication sites located precinct two. Move approval. Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 20 is approval of trailer report for May of 2018.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number 21 is expenditure journal entries 060188 and 070045, 070 through 070050.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 22 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval. A through N.
Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 23 is budgeted business question list FY 17 slash 18, 42.1 through 42.3. Second. Motion made. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 25 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Razzle County, claim number 8005919 through claim number 8006160. Second. Motion made. Second discussion.
I'm sorry, I was looking, because I had four now, but I guess they changed that maybe last minute or four.
We put, we put first one.
Okay, okay, just wanted to be sure. Okay, so I'm sorry, will the motion is second?
Uh, uh, clear.
Okay.
Uh, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Non-motion carries. Let's get down to number 28, sure support on inmate population, Wayne.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 700 today, now, 578 men, 122 women, 35 on electronic monitoring, and 25.
These 100, six days. Temperature must be causing the problem out there or something.
Everybody's looking hurt.
Yeah.
I'm happy I got air conditioning in my house.
I don't really care to be in the jail. Thank you, Wayne.
Yes, sir.
29 is announcement of interest out of possible future agenda topics. Are these call for citizens' input and/or concerns?
I did, I want to remind everybody the tip of hats going on. The law enforcement started yesterday and will go through Thursday, but we'll have a number of members of fire law enforcement, so go, go have dinner out at Roadhouse and let those folks know that we enjoy the money that they're raising, it's for Special Olympics once again, and a great thing for our community and for our law enforcement officers to do.
We didn't move to Hooters, we got a whole.
I don't think there's gonna be room in Hooters to have a big event. Any other citizen input and/or concerns? We'll go back to number 26, convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0725, to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. Counselor?
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Ed Bull with the county attorney's office as counsel to the court. Before the court takes that into executive session, I need to inform them that I've made a written determination that taking this matter up in open court would be detrimental to the Commissioners in this court in these negotiations. I'd ask for a motion and a vote finding that. Thank you.
Uh, for motion?
I want the executive session to discuss the contract. The motion we need is to approve your recommendation.
I refer motion to approve the recommendation of.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was in the record, right? Thank you.
So, what else?
Yeah, somebody has a second.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Analysts, opposed. It's 11, our 10th, 17. This is what we move into executive session.
Ed, this is the one I need to record in here.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah. So, so is this your office? Yeah. I'm sure you're covering. I mean, we have a lot of work to do. I'm glad you're here. 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 I'm glad you're here.[946.13]